For the meeting to water, roll call please.
Chairwoman Novorato.
Here.
Mr. Beniro.
Here.
Mr. Banda.
Here.
Mr. Gargiano is not here. Mr. Graziano.
Here.
Ms. Quaman.
Here.
Mr. Guyan.
Here.
Mr. Zangary.
Here.
Ms. Scheichli is not here. Mr. Leon.
Here.
Mr. Di Lorenzo is not here. Mr. Hertz is not here. Mr. Marinella.
Not here.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sunshine, yes, please.
The meeting has been advertised according to sunshine law.
Communications for reorganization, we will reappoint our board attorney.
First, we need a motion.
Make a motion and a vote.
A second. Roll call.
I'll do it right.
Chairwoman Novorato. Yes. Mr. Beniro.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Quaman.
Yes.
Mr. Guyan.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Leon.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And they have any votes?
I do have no.
Okay. I can do it from here.
You can do it right there, yeah. I state your name.
I, Joseph Marinella.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I state your name.
I, Joseph Marinella.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the office.
Perform all the duties of the office.
Planning, board, attorney.
Planning, board, attorney.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So, homie god. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Approval of the minutes for July 8th, 2024, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chairwoman Novorato.
Yes.
Mr. Beniro.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Quaman.
Yes.
Mr. Guyan.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
And Mr. Leon.
Yes.
Next is our bill list for August 5th, 2024, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Chairwoman Novorato. Yes. Mr. Beniro.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Quaman.
Yes.
Mr. Guyan.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Leon.
Yes.
Yes, Steve. We don't want you sitting anywhere. Yeah. Okay, we have a request for an adjournment of one Nicola Place, which is PB 2410. And that will be heard at our next meeting, and I believe no notice is necessary.
Yes, it would be carried to the meeting of September 12th, is that our next meeting date?
It is September 12th, yes.
At 6:30 PM, all prior notice is effective, and no further notice shall be necessary.
Thank you. Resolutions to be memorialized. 6369 Moore Place, which is PB 2406, did I get a motion for that?
Motion.
Second. Chairwoman Novorato.
Yes.
Mr. Beniro.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Quaman.
Yes.
Mr. Guyan.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Leon.
Yes.
Mr. Leon was not on the board at that time, so that was before, that was, because I know I was at the last meeting and Moore Place was not.
That was June, right, okay.
It was a while ago.
That's why you said you missed it.
Short month.
All right, next is PB 2402, which is 605, 609 Washington Avenue, can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Chairwoman Novorato.
Yes.
Mr. Beniro.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Quaman.
Yes.
Mr. Guyan.
Absolutely.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Applications for board the board this evening, it's 46 and 48 Franklin Street, PB 2409, are you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, chairwoman, members of the board. My name is Matthew Gilson, here on behalf of APD Properties, 4648 Franklin Street, block 2105, block 15. Last month, we were here, we took your message loud and clear, we cut the building back, and we took it down from 35 units, down to 25 units. We got rid of the two bedrooms, they're now all one-bedroom units, and we're here tonight seeking preliminary and final site plan approval with conditional use approval to construct those 25 units. We need two variances, one for the parking, which we're prepared to pay out parking as required under ordinance, and one for we are within five feet of the property line for our parking. So, without further ado, I'd like to call my first witness, Mr. Thomas Ryback, our architect, to provide the picture.
Start with you, please, raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I hope you got it?
I do.
Please say your name, spell your last name.
Tom Ryback, R-Y-B-A-K.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryback, could you please give the board a background of your professional experience?
I'm a licensed architect, um, the state of New Jersey, and probably another 18 or 20 other states. I'm also a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, I've been practicing architecture for the last 35 years.
I had asked him, Mr. Ryback, do you qualify as an expert in building architecture?
Yes.
We see. Then we see this, right?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback, could you please describe your scope of engagement on this project?
Basically, we did a preliminary study of the site, and we came up with several schemes for the owner to analyze, and we gave them some cost estimates on how to, what to build, and what could be done on the site with its limitations in the surrounding area.
And could you please describe, you could go through your plan sheet by sheet and describe the proposed layout and design of the building?
Basically, on the first floor, you have the ground, on the ground floor, you have two staircases, you have the elevator, you have a trellis, as you enter to the small lobby, you have bike storage, you have garbage disposable area, and you also have a commercial component that faces onto the street.
And that commercial component is as required with conditional use?
That's correct. On the upper floors, basically, all floors are the same, you have seven units per floor, and on the upper floor, you have four units.
And could you describe, there is the layout, they're all one-bedroom units?
They're all one-bedroom units, that's correct.
Could you describe, because it was brought up through the supplemental review, the green roof that's proposed for the project?
The green roof is basically facing the main street, and it has some landscaping in front of it, so it's set back. We also added a bathroom facilities and a kitchen facilities for the tenants to use while they're entertaining on the roof.
You could describe these elevations?
So basically, the front of the building is this elevation over here, and this is the other, this is the side elevation, and this is the other side facing the other street, and this is the parking underneath the building. So the building is designed in such a way where it minimizes the look of height, and using different materials, sloped roofs, so basically, you actually see a three-story building from the street, and then you have almost like a mansard on the third floor, and then you have the mansard in the back, and this is the stair tower on the side street, and this is the front elevation, with the audience over here, over here, and on this side. Like she just basically shows it.
So, Mr. Ryback, this is a rendering, correct?
This is the perspective of the building.
If we could mark this as a A1?
A1 is colorized rendering, and is there a date on it?
There's no date. You can make it to this end.
We're good, that's right. Undated as of today, but it's fine.
Could you describe the, where you're looking at from here, and the proof?
This basically shows you the corner building, and the corner of it, this is Franklin, and this is the side street where the building sits, and basically, you have the setback with the building in the back, and then you have the parking underneath it, and on top, you have the railings for the roof garden, and this is the mansard, roofing, trim work, brick, and concrete panels that basically accent the ground floor and the elevation of the staircase.
So if you're looking at this from Franklin, you're seeing a four-story building?
You actually see a three-story building, and the fourth is a mansard, so it gives you a look that it's a roof.
I have no further questions, would Mr. Ryback make any further testimony? I submit Mr. Ryback to the board for questioning.
Does anyone have? Does anyone have any questions?
The fencing along the side street, what is that? That's kind of shielding the parking garage underneath.
That's right.
On the rear side, what is that made of?
Public PVC.
PVC? Yeah, that fence right there.
Probably a composite material.
I prefer composite, it's decorative, I can't tell from this particular.
Basically, very simple, but we're open for suggestions.
Just because it's a side street, I don't like to see an exposed garage, so anything that'd be.
No, that's going to be covered, that'll be covered.
Hey, could you tell me the, how the entrance of the garage is lined with? Is it going to be key?
It's all secure too, right, that fence is.
That's always secure, we'll have gates, so basically, you have a motion sensor, and the gates will open when you enter the garage area.
And the light from the garage, it's not going to be kind of protruding out onto the street, the rear, into the neighbors' windows, it's not going to do any of that?
Most of the lighting in the garage, it basically just shoots down to where the parking is. You have a setback, if you look at the site plans and everything else, we have a nice setback between the line of the building and the end of the parking lot itself.
No, there's usually kind of light.
Is there going to be cameras in the garage?
Yes, there will be. So the setback on the column light in the building length is 15 feet, so you have quite a bit of space, so all the light will be in that area, it's not going to go into the English property, that's how it was designed, that's how much it was intended. We didn't take the building as per ordinances and maximize the site, we always had the building in this envelope, in this setback, the way we do it.
I would also propose, if the board would be comfortable with a six-month look back from your engineer, once the building is built, so we evaluate the lighting, and make sure that it's not a problem to be aware of.
Excellent. That makes me feel better about that.
Can I speak up, how would that be handled, private or?
It would be private.
Private?
Basically, you have a garbage room where everyone will deposit their garbage, recycling, or whatever policies it would be, and then we'll.
Are there shoots, or just everyone?
There's no shoot at this point.
So the building is.
It's not tall enough to have a shoot.
No, I understand.
We could have had a shoot before, from now on.
I have a quick question about the sidewalk on Franklin, would you consider it going from corner to corner?
So part of the requirements is that they have to redo the sidewalks in the streetscaping scheme of the township, which is our downtown streetscaping, that would go, the basics of that would basically be there all around their particular property, you want further than that?
Yeah, I would like that, because it'd be a good neighborhood.
How far would you want them to go?
Corner to corner.
Corner to corner where? So it's got to be ready.
Um, Eighth Street to the end of the, uh.
Old Eighth Street?
No, Franklin.
Old Franklin, so Franklin is being done based on a grant that we have, so most of that's all actually going to be done already, by grant money, starting in September. So they're, if you want, maybe down the side street?
Well, they already have to do it.
Or in front of, or just in front of, well, their corner is, right, goes from Eighth Street to, what's the other street?
The don, it's sort of right.
Right in front of that, yeah.
The parking lot, of course.
Right, right. Right across the park, so just that?
Yeah.
Say that, we could reallocate some of the grant money to maybe the Belmont area. If they're okay with it, it's not a big, it's not a big area. I know, we're trying, I'm just trying to get them to explain what it is.
Okay, so this is the, between, what, two streets?
This is the. What is the, do you know that?
They are beat up, a lot of those, a lot of those side streets are beat up, so if we could fix some of it.
We really wanted, which eventually, the property would be, we wanted, because we like to go down the downtown street, where it will be upgraded and it will be open.
What I would suggest is this, since you have a grant for Franklin, and you're going to do that, if we could somehow coordinate the work that we have to do, and what you have to do, so we don't have to rip out the sidewalk that was put in, and that basically gets coordinated. We already have in the budget to upgrade the sidewalks around our property, that money that we have designated for Franklin, we could use it in another area, so therefore, it's not that much of an exposure, and basically, everyone is a winner in this scenario.
It looks like it's about the same amount of sidewalk, based on the visual that I'm looking at, if we weren't doing.
It's a little bit more, but we could talk about.
Because we're doing this, and said they can reallocate the money that they were going to do, to maybe some other.
Isn't that sidewalk relatively new, in front of the church park?
Well, we're going to be upgraded.
It's going to be the downtown style, like we have in front of ShopRite, and in front of the Food Depot, it's all going, of course, all Franklin, along with the meters.
So. Because that, yeah, what would you allocate?
No, you should say we can allocate it to one of the other side streets, if we weren't going to have it there. They would reallocate the funds that they have set aside for what they were going to do in Franklin, to anything else we were about to ask for.
I mean, the other way of doing it is, we could agree on the amount of what it is, of what we had in the budget for it, and that will be subject to the approvals that we have. So it doesn't, may not need to go there, but it could go somewhere else. But your call.
We could, this is Franklin's side, this is already agreed on.
Well, this is.
So your grant is doing a whole, a whole area sheet, so he's. That's what he's saying, that's what he's saying.
So basically, we need something directed by that, I'll talk to Tom Burns and say, we have this, these funds were allocated for this piece, being that we're doing that because he has the plans, I'll tell him, listen, we have these funds there, I'll get to this, but because we're doing it, we can allocate them somewhere else, just tell us where you want to allocate.
Yeah, I, maybe, let's, when we get a break, let me see if I can figure out the best break, maybe it's just something about describing the amount of money you're fee that you were to do, and then before you do it in front of, directly in front of your property, you'll work with the town engineer to determine, something like that.
Excuse me, is this a public meeting or a private meeting?
Well, I'm speaking in public, so.
Well, there's a thing called microphones. You know, I mean, this is, some of you members have years of experience on this board in the public meetings, you don't know how to use a microphone yet, nobody did.
Mr. Fran Tantoni, why don't you come up to the front row, so you can hear better?
I, what's the difference, what about the people back here?
But you don't have to be back there, you could be up a lot.
You're in a turn, you're not going to use your microphone.
They didn't teach you that, but.
You'll have the opportunity. All right, we are going to hold off at five minutes later on, to get back in. Are there any other questions at the board?
What's the exterior signage of the building?
Basically, you're going to have metal panels on the upper portion, this is concrete panels, and this is brick with here.
One last thing, the commercial signage, can you go over that? I'd like to, I'd like it to stay kind of in unison, the whole building, so if somebody comes in and they want to put aside, I'd like to approve the signage for it, so that when they do that, they don't have two different, completely different types of signs on the building, and it just doesn't look clean, it looks kind of stuck from here and there. Last time, I think, I said, I think I'd want to put awnings, modern-looking awnings, if that's a possibility, or, right now, all you have is like a window decal.
We have glass awnings over all the entrances.
Okay.
And you can see that on the elevations, and also on the, on the perspective.
I see one one.
And then there's another one on the other side of the side, and then this one basically doesn't, it faces the other side, but there's a, it's not in this view, but there's another one, so you actually have three awnings. As it relates to signage, the intent is not to chintz on the building, so we don't want to do box signage, we're going to have either cutouts, or the signage is going to be on the glass of the business itself.
And I would just like to set that now, so that any user that comes in, they don't have five, they're attached to signs all over the building, I don't want it to look cluttered or messy, I want it to look clean and.
It would be one ton.
One ton?
It would be one ton, because the retail space is quite small.
Okay. Okay.
No other questions? I'm going to close this portion.
Excuse me?
I'm going to close this portion of the members, and open it up to the public. Does the public have any questions, and all questions for this witness? Mr. Fran Tantoni.
Let's, Fran Tantoni, 1049 Mount Park right there. Sir, you mentioned that they're all one bedroom apartments, can you tell me how many square feet they are?
They vary in size, but the average is 775.
And can we see a layout of the, how the rooms are?
This is, this is your layout, so it's an open plan, the bedroom is on the inside, and this one, this one has it on the outside wall, you have a kitchen with an eating area, you have the living space right through here, this is a combined dining and kitchen area, and the bedroom is right here, and these are basically the side, they're all the same. Yeah.
There's no dance?
No, it's a simple, it's a simple flat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? It's strictly.
I understand, how is. Jump up, we're on 60, watch on your, you're parked, um, parking situation, what are you planning to do about that?
Basically. This is the layout for the parking, we have two handicapped, and then the rest of them are parked areas, and I think testimonies are going to happen later on on what we have, and then we have two stations for electric vehicles.
What about, there's more than, you know, like, are they going to have extra people over, or are they going to stay overnight, or are they even going to have parking facilities as well, or how is that going to work?
Well, we will give you testimony on that, the engineers will testify on that.
Jonathan, please spell your last name for me.
Oh, B, B, Z, Boy, B, J, L, I, O, N, is Nicholas.
Thank you. Mr. Drogas.
Now, Dr. Drogas, 95 thousand, he's got that, okay, a couple of simple questions, hold on, I'm on target here, did you ever do a traffic, uh, traffic study in there?
We have, we have a trial.
That's coming up, that's fine, how about a parking study?
We have that coming up also.
I guess I'm ahead of you. One of the questions I had, that all, you know, you mentioned about the one bedrooms, how can you determine that the renters are only, what happens if the renters have two, three cars in that one apartment, what would you do there?
In a one bedroom, you would only have maybe one or two people living.
Well, suppose you have an adult child, that's three people possibly, people, well, people live in basement apartments, I have six of them living around the block from me.
There's also people that don't have any cars.
We hope they don't, are you charging extra for parking?
That's an administrative question, I don't, I don't have an answer.
Okay. Is there retail on the bottom?
Yes.
Where is the retail going to park, and how many retail spots are you going to have for them?
That's, that's in the breakdown, the engineer will go over that.
Okay. I said away, no?
Yeah, you shouldn't, you can ask architectural questions.
Or is it better that I come back, if I'm going to.
You can ask.
All right, I'm going to come back.
Okay, thank you.
No sense is.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any other public, Mr. Sheldon, on up?
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47th Flag Street. I got a copy of your site plans earlier today, and something just immediately struck me as odd, if everyone could just turn to the first page, first column of the first page. If someone, either the chairwoman, or someone began to read off the names that appear in the first column?
This one?
Yeah. So I, my, the natural question is, why are the zoning board members listed on the cover sheet, and yet this is appearing before the planning board? It would seem to reason that in the beginning of this process, the applicant was told that this project would necessarily have to go before the zoning board, that's why the names of all the principal, the chair of the zoning board, Mr. Gil Gercio, the vice-chairwoman.
Is there, Mike, is there a question for this witness?
Yeah, I want to know why, why the zoning board members are on the sheet, on the cover sheet, and not the planning board members.
That's a legit question, but it's not for this witness.
Who, what witnesses that?
Well, he didn't prepare the site plan. He prepares the architectural plans.
Right.
So it's not.
It is on the architectural plan, but it's just been typo oversight, and no time to make an application of the zoning.
Okay. I mean, I.
It's an oversight, oversight.
This is the same plan.
Why does that become an oversight?
Well, we didn't prepare the plan, so I doubt anyone up here can give you the answer, but if you want to ask the question of the engineer, which is the architect, maybe he knows, I don't know why I put him on.
Is there an extra copy of the zoning analysis available? Usually, Mr. Di Lorenzo would prepare an analysis indicating whether or not a project was compliant with the zoning in a given area, and if not, that they necessarily would have to go before the zoning board, I didn't, I wasn't able to get a copy of that, is there an extra copy of the zoning analysis?
I can send it to you, Mike, or if you want.
Did Mr. D. Lorenzo prepare that?
No.
Who prepared it?
I did.
You did. All right, you're, you're the, you're the acting zoning officer. And you've been the acting zoning officer since the beginning, or since March of this year?
Is that when you rolled up?
Mr. Sheldon, we're not gonna have...
Yeah, to answer, yes.
This, this is legitimate question.
No, but it's not...
But it's not of this witness.
Yeah, it's not of me.
So I'll, I'll, I'll speak on that. Um, so from before that, I was helping prepare. From before the leave, Mr. D. Lorenzo went out on leave, I was helping prepare all the letters. He would review them and sign one upon them. Uh, after, after he took his leave, uh, they made me the acting zoning official, because I have the certificates to do so. So I've been preparing them and signing them ever since, yes.
All right. So you have the certificates, but according to the New Jersey Civil Service statutes, in order to be a zoning officer, you have to have three years' experience performing, uh, job-related activities before you can act as a zoning officer. From what I recall, you were hired by the town hall just last year, so you've been an employee of the town hall for about a year and a half. You don't have the three years, according to the Civil Service statutes, to serve as a zoning officer.
Mr. Sheldon.
Well, they have a problem, I guess.
Legal challenge is gonna follow, all right? I just wanted to literally guys know.
It can, however...
Mr. Marionello should be keenly aware of this matter, because I don't believe that Mr. Banda, with all due respect, is compliant with Civil Service statutes. You wanna take a break? Look at the Ci- New Jersey Civil Service website. Job titles, zoning officer, very clearly says, three years, three years' experience in that, in doing job-related activities.
I thought that would be a permanent position, but, um...
For local, for a local zoning officer.
Okay.
All right?
You might have a point, I don't know, I haven't looked at it. But it's not a question of this ar-
Well, it calls into question all of his rules.
That's great, and at the end, you can make a whole thing about it if you want. But we have to get to the end before that happens, and that helps...
I'll bring it up again in closing, though.
That's fine, that's fine, right?
But there may be, there may be a legitimate legal challenge here that Mr. Banda, as well intentioned as he may be, he may not be legally entitled at this point in his career to serve as a zoning officer, according to the New Jersey Civil Service statutes.
Do you have a question for this witness?
I wanted to know why, why the zoning office, why the zoning board members were listed on the front page and not...
I think the answer that was...
I mean, Mr. Ryback may have a different answer, but mine, I agree, it was just a typo oversight.
All right, well, I'll, I'll take your word for it, but I think that they were initially told, "You may need to go before the zoning board," and that's why the zoning board members were put on the front sheet, because they expected to go before the zoning board, and it got changed to the fact.
I, I can stipulate, from my involvement in this project from the beginning, even when we were on a much larger project, we were still blind at the planning board. Because the issue with the planning board and zoning board is, you know, and the public may know, is whether you need D. variances or not. And we never, we never did meet a condition of additional use, we were never too high for the ordinance, we were never not of permitted use, we never exceeded a floor area ratio, and I don't remember offhand what the other two are. But there was nothing in this project, from its conception, that would ever require us to go to the zoning board.
Thank you.
You have three members of the council sitting here, one on the planning board, two in the audience.
Mr. Sheldon, do that in the appropriate time.
They may need to look into this matter, whether Mr. Banda can serve as a zoning officer.
Okay, are there any other public that would like to speak? I'm gonna close this portion. You can continue with your witnesses.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, my next witness will be our engineer, Ms. Kirsten Osterkorn.
Do you want some closer questions?
I'm trying to line up the...
If you want some closer questions, stand so you can... It's this way, so you can...
Oh, yeah, that's good.
Is that better, so this way, you can go left? And I'll, I'll...
Does everyone see the screen? Cause my back is everywhere.
All right. Yeah, I got you.
Okay, sorry. Uh, okay, um, can you sort of tell the truth of the truth, and then we'll go through to help you out? I do. Uh, can you spell your first name, I'd like to know. Kirsten, K. I. E. R. S. T. E. N. Osterkorn, O. S. T. E. R. K. O. R. Forty-two Central Avenue, um...
Ms. Osterkorn, could you please give the board the benefit of their professional experience?
Yes, I am a civil engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey. I have been in front of this board on tour applications. Please accept your credentials.
Now, Ms. Osterkorn, could you describe your involvement in this project?
Yes, I, um, got brought in after they had a survey, they went through the architecture, they needed the site plan to meet checklist requirements. Um, so I got brought in to do the civil engineering portion of the project. But just to initially state for any potential future questions, I am not the traffic engineer, so anything with parking, I'm gonna end up deferring again to the next witness after me. For the people in the audience.
Ms. Osterkorn, could you please describe the existing conditions of the site as they are today?
Yes, this is the set of plans. Revised through seven twenty-five, twenty-four. Um, my first sheet just goes over how the key map and the zoning analysis, which will end up being, went through thoroughly by the planner leader. Um, so existing conditions on the site, on the left side of my sheet, two of my site plan set that was submitted, I don't believe you'll exhibit, right?
This is what you put, this is what you...
This is what was submitted, yes.
This is submitted, it's fine.
Yes, um, for the purposes of the page, north is up, south is down. Uh, there is an existing three-story frame dwelling on the site. We have Franklin Ave. on the south side of the property, and North East Street on the right side. There is mainly pavement on the site. We have some stucco garages, driveways, buildings. Everything is being removed from the property. Um, all features on the existing property are gonna be demolished. Under our proposed conditions, on the right side of the page, as Mr. Ryback went over of the architectural plans, we are showing the building footprint, um, as well as the parking lot layout. We have our handicap to the west side of the site. Your entrance is off of North East Street. Uh, we have our sidewalk outdoor patio area that has a trellis over on the west side of the building. Additional sidewalk on the right side. We have noted for some of the site improvements, with the driveway entrance on the east side of the property. We are proposing the six-foot privacy fence along the west and north sides, so be along all of the parking areas that then wrap around to meet the front of the, um, not the front, the North East Side, Eighth Street side, which then also, from the architect's rendering, had shown the nicer-looking fencing and the gate entrance on that, uh, entrance on that side. Uh, moving on to my third sheet. This is my left side of the page is grading and utilities. Um, the grading of the property was fairly simple. We started coming off of North East Street. Um, set our elevations, came in, we have a trench drain. Right when you come into the property, um, everything ends up sloping up in elevation to the west. So the parking lot, um, in essence, when rainfall is happening, the only part that's really gonna hit the parking lot is everything outside the building, and all that water will end up being collected into the trench drain. All, the entire roof area will get piped into a drainage system that we're proposing underneath the building, um, that will end up infiltrating into the ground, provide, we are not a major development, um, so we're providing what's required by the township that has been approved, and there was other projects that Mr. Harris, um, is familiar with for the requirements for drainage. Um, with utilities, we're coming off the building onto Franklin Street for our water, gas, sanitary, uh, and, and electric. On the right side of the sheet is a soil erosion and sediment control plan. That will get submitted to Hudson Essex Piscine Soil Conservation District as requirements for disturbing over five thousand square feet. Um, they end up just requiring certain details for construction entrance and self-fence to ensure that the disturbance on the site stays within the site and doesn't go into the public right of way. On sheet four, we have our landscaping and lighting plan. We have the, um, the roof area on top that has some greenery to show. All other elements of non-impervious on the property. We are showing a lawn area, um, given where the fences are. Trying to plant some sort of tree or bigger bush isn't gonna actually grow well and be maintained, so we're just having lawn. For the lighting, um, we have the light shown on all the entrances. I'm not a hundred percent sure why at this moment, but to speak also to Mr. Ryback, the lighting that we have for the garage, for some reason, is off, and I talked to Mr. Harris about this after the fact, but, um, all of the building-mounted lights that are under the garage shine down, and as Mr. Ryback had testified, they don't come outside of the building, and it is set back from the north side, and with the privacy fence, even the, the cars driving in, that lighting will be blocked by the, the fencing. So there's not gonna be any protrusion out to the neighboring properties from the lighting perspective. And then the last two sheets are just construction details, pretty standard, and our soil erosion, sediment control details on the last sheet, as well as the drainage system design. Um, going to briefly, from our open space and coverage of what's permitted, um, we are under what's required, we're not asking for variances in those elements. And with the multiple increase in, the, the increase in coverage was minimal concerning what's there existing, but ultimately, we're taking more in area than, that's necessary, taking the driveway, now, this is what we're talking to the back of everybody. Taking the driveway and the whole roof area into the drainage system, it's more than the increase. So we're making the site better from a drainage perspective of what was just coming off the site into the streets are now all being collected in, to the ground. Um, all other elements with respect to the zoning is gonna be talked about in the plan.
And I know that Mr. Hughes will discuss more of the traffic and the parking. Could you quickly describe the parking layout?
Yes. So, you come in from North Eighth Street, and we have eighteen parking spaces. Uh, we have the proper nine-foot by eighteen-foot, we actually have nine by nineteen feet with twenty-four feet of backup, so we're not asking for any diminutive exceptions from the residential site improvement standards. We have the two required ADA spaces, as well as EV, uh, electric vehicle spaces that are required. Um, it'll end up speaking, Mr. Hughes will end up speaking to what the requirements are versus what we're providing, and what the other additional allocation is um, based on the requirements for the town that we have.
Now, the other variance we're seeking is being five feet from the property line.
Okay.
Could you describe why you designed it that way, and why you believe this is a better engineering standard to this piece of property?
If we, on that, on the parking to the north side, where we're, we're able to put the privacy fencing, if we were to end up trying to meet that five-foot requirement, we would end up either losing the parking spaces completely, um, or having not the required ninety, uh, ninety-degree backup aisle of the twenty-four feet, that having those additional parking spaces um, playing into a conforming use and a conforming amount of units that are permitted on it, we thought the benefit of having more parking as opposed to paying out, which is allowed for the town as well, was a better use for this space, and the privacy fence still, in essence, acts as the buffer to that neighboring, this is, I'm sorry, this is so difficult, I'm going to circle. I think the intent of a buffer is to buffer from the neighbor, and usually it's to be done by landscaping, that five feet would allow from landscaping. But being able to put a privacy fence still provides that same buffer to block the lights and noise that would be happening, of what the intent of the buffer is.
Mm-hmm.
I have no further questions to ask, and Ms. Osterkorn, if you have a question.
Uh, any board members have any questions of this witness? Close this portion, I'll open up to the public. Mr. Dros?
Hopefully, I've got some answers now.
Uh, I don't do traffic.
You have to wait for one more person.
I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm not in traffic. Sorry, I said that when I first started, so you knew.
Let me just, let me just say, you, 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 nothing with the parking study, right?
Parking study, traffic study.
Move down, all right.
Okay.
You said only eighteen parking spaces?
Yes.
Did you just say that?
Yes.
That's it for the whole building, for twenty-five units, eighteen parking spaces?
Yes.
Where the rest of the park supposed to park? On the street, there or there?
Oh, my God, it's right my eye. Sorry, no. Um, I, I can't speak to...
Wait, does the eighteen include the E for EV vehicles?
There are the two EV that are part of that.
So that's sixteen, so really, six, you're down to sixteen, would you say? If you have two EV, nobody's gonna park overnight in the EVs, they're gonna have to leave that open, probably.
Not down to sixteen, we have eighteen physical spaces, technically.
No, eighteen physical plus?
Eighteen get, actually gets you to twenty, technically.
Okay, so, but who's really gonna, I mean, is anybody gonna park in the EV, utilize that?
If a resident has one?
But he's gonna leave it there overnight, suppose five residents have it.
They gotta charge you.
I mean, what do you do here?
I don't know.
You know?
There's a share.
You're gonna charge you.
We can always extend more EV spaces.
All right, so you're saying that the, the, uh, the other five supposedly all have to park on the street somewhere? Or are they gonna park in...
Or maybe they don't have cars? I think that goes to the traffic study of what the demographics are of it.
But to say that they don't have cars, this is not Hoboken or New York City, so... Everybody's gonna have at least a minimum of one car.
Well, I don't wanna put my foot in my mouth, I really don't think that's better for the traffic.
Absolutely, yes, how's the traffic?
I could give you random thoughts, but it's not my expertise.
I think in this case, we were trying to open up and everybody's speaking.
Well, that's why I just want to focus.
I'm just trying to focus on her. But is it possible that the church next door, they may be utilizing the church parking lot? Because the, you know, the town is looking to possibly put up, uh, EVs. They're gonna renovate that to church lot, and the church is gonna get a fee from it, so is there some kind of possible deal that developers working with the church to let them utilize that? Or, or the tenant's gonna rent from the church to park there?
But an engineer wouldn't...
I can't answer that question, I'm sorry.
I can say only that all options, as far as that are on the table, but considering the situation up in the air right now, we didn't think it was inappropriate to make those spots part of our group, but it's certainly something that's on the table for discussion.
Just see how many more of your response.
If there's traffic or parking in it, probably don't ask me.
Right.
Right. Well, the town should really be doing a tra- not, not that I'm new with the town itself, or maybe the planning board should recommend to the town council to do a parking study for the entire town and see where there're delinquent in parking spots and that affect the developments in the future.
We do have a couple of council in the audience.
I know, they're, they're listening to what I'm saying, they're listening.
Yeah.
Um, what's the, what's the setback in the building, the five feet you said, I see?
Uh, that's to the parking, the setback is fifteen feet to the north.
Fifteen, you said you got fifteen feet back there.
To the north, to the building.
What are you gonna do with that fifteen feet?
That's parking spaces.
Those are part of the parking, all right. How far are you going to the property line, let's go that way?
From the parking?
Are you going right, no, no, just everything. So you got parking at the end, and then what you have there beyond that? Where the last parking spot is?
You have more view of foot. That's where the fence is, and you have curving and a fence.
Yeah, okay, how far is the last parking spot to the fence?
It's like eight inches, eight inches of foot.
Okay, so you're going practically on?
Yes, and then the fence is going to be right on.
Right, so you go practically on the property line. Alright, so I'll have to come back again.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the engineers' panel? Seeing now, we're going to close this portion and continue. Your witnesses?
Sure. I don't know if you need that, just because you're here in my plans if you need.
Certainly, Hunter Hughes, H-U-G-H-E-S.
Mr. Hughes, can you please give the board the benefit of the professional spirit?
Certainly, I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, I've been practicing traffic engineering for about eight years now. I've been accepted as an expert in various awards, Newark, Bellevue.
Who accepts your credentials?
Thank you.
Would you like to square me? Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
Mr. Hughes, did you prepare a study in connection to this application?
Yes, I did. I prepared a traffic and parking study that's last revised July 25th of this year.
And this is to reflect the current twenty-five that you had previously submitted before our presentation?
Yes, that's correct.
And could you please give the board an overview of your study and findings?
Certainly, so as mentioned, we did prepare a comprehensive traffic and parking study. So, the main, the main focus of it was obviously the parking, we did also look at some of the traffic, potential traffic impacts as well, but in order to focus on that, that parking aspect, we conducted parking counts in the areas surrounding the site within about seven hundred fifty feet or about one to two blocks. So that covers Franklin Street along the site frontage, North Eighth Street along the side frontage, as well as North Ninth Street, Lake Street, Eugene Place, and North Seventh Street, within that one to two block radius. And we chose that distance since we consider that to be essentially a reasonable walking distance to park and walk over to the building. Essentially equates to about a five minute walk to the farthest potential parking space within that study radius. Just as a frame of reference, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, they publish parking and trip generation data for numbers of uses, I'm sure you've heard of it, traffic engineers mention this publication, but they consider an influence area of half a mile when they look at areas with mass transit. So, essentially with that point five mile influence area, they deem that residents within five, point five miles of the train station are willing to walk up to that distance from the train to, to home, vice versa. And again, the furthest point that we looked at within our study area is about seven hundred fifty feet or less than a quarter mile, and it's about a five minute walk. So, we conducted these counts in April of this year, specifically Tuesday, April 23rd. We conducted these from six o'clock PM to ten o'clock PM, since this would represent the peak time period for the residential parking demand, residential aspect of the project, when most residents are home, so it kind of covers that late night period. And then we did also look at the Saturday midday period from eleven AM to two PM, that was conducted on Saturday, April 27th. This would represent kind of the combined peak parking demand period for both the commercial portion and the residential, when, you know, residents might be home, you also have people that might be visiting the retail or commercial portion, so it kind of just combines those two together. So those are the two time periods we looked at, the weekday, late evening, and then the Saturday midday. When we looked at our results, essentially what we did is we drove down each of these blocks, each of these streets, counted the available spaces that were found along each section, totaled those up to come up with an overall number of available parking spaces because in the study area that I mentioned, during that weekday evening period, we found around eighty spaces available, again, includes the entire area, and during that Saturday midday period, we found around six or five spaces available at any point in time, so that's the minimum during that entire period that I mentioned earlier. And again, there's also local parking restrictions of course as well, these peak demands are outside of those, those restriction times and as well as the street cleaning hours. For instance, along North Seventh Street, there's no parking from eight AM to four PM on school days during the St. Anthony's model of school. However, during our weekday evening count, again, outside of those hours, we found that the minimum available spaces was between eight thirty to ten PM during that late evening period. Street cleaning, seven thirty to eleven thirty Wednesday, twelve thirty to four o'clock on Thursday, again, outside of those hours is when the peak demand would occur. And those overnight spaces that we found, those late night spaces, were typically found more along Franklin Street, kind of along the site area, as well as along, some along North Street, but the vast majority was along North Eighth Street, south of Franklin. Due to the school being closed, there's businesses on the other side as well that don't have that demand at night, that's where the majority of those open available spaces were located based on our study. So that kind of establishes our existing parking conditions. The next aspect that we looked at was the trip generation aspects of the project, so we base this on, again, we looked at the ITD publication for trip generation, Institute of Transportation Engineers, latest edition being the eleventh edition, which is what we referenced, for mid-rise residential use with ground floor commercial, based on the twenty-five units, ITD projects in the morning peak hour, which is the highest single hour of traffic on the adjacent roadways, two inbound trips, three outbound trips, for a total of five. Again, that's the weekday morning, during the weekday afternoon peak hour, three inbound trips, four outbound trips, for a total of seven. And NJDOT, Department of Transportation, they set forth what they consider to be a significant increase in traffic during a peak hour of one hundred new peak hour trips. So, whenever there's one hundred new peak hour trips during a single hour, they consider that to be a significant increase. Again, as I just mentioned, our highest hour only projects seven total trips, so we are well below that threshold to be considered a significant increase. And based on that, this low level of trip generation, we do not anticipate there to be any significant traffic impacts in terms of trip generation, number of cars coming in and out of the site, things of that nature. There's also obviously mass transit in the area, they have the Silver Lake, Silver Lake Lake Rail Station, just six hundred feet west, there's also numerous bus stations, there's one just across the street, a hundred fifty feet to the west, these provide services, obviously Newark Penn Station, Toronto City, Elizabeth train station, you can take the bus, so there's a number of options mass transit wise as well that help to influence the reduction in vehicle trips and in turn the parking demand as well. I'll get into that as well when I get to my parking justifications. We kind of already went over the, the site layout, just, just didn't cover that very well, so I won't really touch on any of that. So getting into the parking requirements and our justifications for the parking that we are providing, based on the ordinance from the township, twenty-nine spaces are required, this is based on one space per unit for the residential, as well as one guest space for every ten residential spaces required, and then the retail or commercial portion requires one or eight hundred square feet, this totals up to twenty-nine parking spaces. As we mentioned, we also do have the electric vehicle spaces, of which we're providing three, based on state statute, as well as the ordinance, those EV spaces allow us to take a credit up to ten percent of the parking requirement off of that, so, with twenty-nine spaces required, we're allowed to take up, credit up to two spaces, that knocks the requirement down to twenty-seven, whereas we are providing eighteen, so we do require a variance from that requirement of twenty-seven of nine spaces. However, as we mentioned, we are willing to do the payment in lieu of those, those spaces to alleviate that, that variance. But, forgetting about that for a second, just in terms of the numbers, so comparing eighteen proposed to the twenty-seven, or twenty-nine, sorry, twenty-seven that were required with the EV reduction, so we looked at the, some ITD data again, this time on parking demands, so we looked at their parking information for one bedroom mid-rise buildings, they project based on the number of units at about point three five spaces per unit, this would equate to nine spaces. This is for areas within, that are close to, or locations that are close to rail transit, again, within that half mile radius, as I mentioned, you have the Lake Rail Station that's just around the corner from the site, so it certainly would be an influence that qualifies to be within this category. Just to give another frame of reference, for a general suburban area, it would be point six per unit, this would equate to fifteen spaces, so, either way, the residential requirement would be that based on these ITD numbers. For the retail, ITD would project four spaces based on square footage of it, so the total ITD demand based on a dense area close to rail transit, thirteen spaces, based on a general, or general suburban area, would be nineteen spaces. So, either way, again, we're very much within range of what ITD would project. These numbers are based on studies that they've done at actual sites where they combine data from these sites to come up with an average demand, to come up with these numbers, so it's based on real life information from various similar types of sites. Again, as I mentioned, there's the mass transit availability to help influence a reduction in parking demands and vehicle demands. I looked at some of the census data in terms of journey to work models and how typically residents are commuting, about fifteen percent are typically using mass transit, that is for the specific census tract that the site is located in, obviously it's not Hoboken or Toronto City, but still fifteen percent is some level of influence that will reduce some of those demands. And it was mentioned a couple of times about the one bedrooms being at least usually one, if not two cars, we looked at some census data for vehicle ownership as well, again, for this specific census tract. For rental units, the census data shows about one point two five vehicles per rental unit, and for owner occupied units, it's about one point seven, so less than two, typically less than two cars per unit, whether it's owner occupied or renter occupied, again, in this specific area. There's also a number of other factors, it's obviously walk, whether sidewalks, it's bikeable, commercial space in particular will cater more likely to the local neighborhood, it's not necessarily going to generate a lot of vehicular traffic, it's a very small amount of retail area, so it's likely going to be some sort of smaller use that would attract more, again, local residents, traffic, things of that nature, not necessarily somebody driving specifically from a neighbor in town to this particular retail unit. So that also kind of helps to reduce that vehicular demand. And again, as I mentioned earlier, we did look at the local parking availability along the streets, that would cater mainly to the retail customers, it would help with any overflow for the residential demands as well, visitors were mentioned, so anything like that could be catered and accommodated by those available street spaces. So as I mentioned, during the peak residential period in the evening, about eighty spaces minimum were found, Saturday midday was sixty, so, if you figure, even if half of those spaces were found to be available to accommodate the nine additional spaces, there's a difference from the proposed amounts of what is required, there's more than enough available spaces within a close range that can be available by customers, residents, visitors, anything of that nature. So, with that, we do feel comfortable that the parking supply can at least accommodate the majority of residents, if there is any overflow, the parking spaces along the streets can help to alleviate some of that as well. So with the scale of the project and all of the metrics that I've kind of walked through, various factors in terms of the mass transit, things like that, we feel that it is a viable project from a parking perspective, and with that, I would hope for myself, if any questions unless there's any fancy like.
Thank you, just, just to confirm, we're putting three electric?
I think it's two, correct? Okay, two is three, because we have one for the ADA.
Oh, the ADA, I forgot about the ADA.
Yeah, yeah, one is ADA, two standard.
In part of your analysis, did you include the private property of the school lot or the lot next door?
No, we only counted parking spaces on the street, no, no parking lots or.
So the sixty-five EV is strictly street parking availability?
Yes, yes.
Is there anybody else that have questions?
So, just, just to confirm, so the town's, the town's parking requirements are higher than the state's because you mentioned RSIS, so if we went by the state standard in, in construction projects, one bedroom, it would have been fifteen spaces total, it would have been a parking.
So that was, those were based on ITD, so those are standards based on national data that they've collected, RSIS were required for a one bedroom, one point eight per unit.
One point eight?
Yes, for a one bedroom.
For a one bedroom?
Yes, so to compare that to the census data that we talked about, that was about for owner occupied, one point seven, so it's more or less within that range, but that one point eight for the RSIS is kind of a blanket requirement to, to cater to more suburban types of areas, and there is elements of the RSIS that offer up, you know, alternative parking, that alternative parking standards should be looked at in more urban areas where mass transit is available, things like that.
What are those?
What's that?
What are those per unit?
Well, there's, they don't have a specific requirement for like different types of areas, that's why I'm saying it's like a blanket, one point eight, but all they stipulate is that if you are in a more urban area, if there is other aspects at play that reduce parking demands, could apply.
I don't know if this question is for you or the owner, but I'm curious, if you're nine spots short, who's, who gets short? Is it the last person home at night, or are you going to have leases telling people you don't have a parking spot?
That's more for the owner, I'm not sure how they're going to allocate the parking.
Because to me, that's kind of important, I'd rather see nine people say, look, you're on your own with parking, whether it has somebody who works a little late, comes home and now he can't find a parking spot. At least you can tell people up front, hey, you want to rent the apartment? There's no parks.
Also, they're going to be charged.
Designated parking spots.
Okay, I can call the owner up to testify that they're going to be designated parking spots. So six, nine people probably won't be.
Nine apartments, yeah. They're not designated.
Like I said, we're also looking to include, if at some point possible, the church parking next door, just for purposes of this application, since that's up in the air right now, we're not. Yeah, I just think the worst case scenario is you come home late and I'm, it's this way, you people know up front, hey, you don't have a parking spot.
And also will they be charged currently?
That is to be determined honestly, I don't know.
That, yeah, that's to be determined.
Because if you're charged and they don't want to pay the extra, they're going to be on the street.
Understood.
Any other questions? I'll close this portion. Mario.
I'm back.
You're back.
Great person.
I've got a lot of questions.
Alright, let's get started.
Let me ask you something, one point two, what is one, what is, what is a one point two car, one car, what is two, what is two?
Right, so.
The hood?
It's a good question. Obviously, it's not, yeah, obviously it's not like a portion of a car, it's, all it is, is, you know, it's an average essentially, so, if we take that average apply it to, you know, the number of units that are being proposed, it gives us a typical demand of what, that amount of units would.
Because I'm looking at one point two and I, and are you ready, flat, you know, seven parking spaces?
Uh, nine.
Nine parking spaces, so if you do one point two and add it up, it comes out to more than nine now.
Right, that's.
So you're really.
It's calculated, it's not, we're not calculating.
So basically, nine is not the real number, it's really going to be higher if you do one point two times.
It's based on how the warranty is calculated.
Right, did you, what, what times did you do those studies again?
Sure, so.
And how, and how many times did you do the study? Just one time?
Yeah, it's just one day.
What day?
Online, off the record, it's taken, Mario. A question, then answer.
Okay.
Then question. Alright, one at a time, please.
Okay, what, what time of day did you do it?
Sure, so we did one, we did one weekday during the evening from six PM to ten PM.
Can I ask what day, Monday?
Mario.
It was a Tuesday, Tuesday, April 23rd, to be exact, and then we did Saturday, April 27th, from eleven AM to two PM, one Saturday.
Were you there by any chance when the light rail was coming around?
I didn't observe the light rail.
Okay, the light rail was there, was, was one of the problems you had in that area is the school, I mean, it's, I mean, most of us know, it's far above there. You've mentioned Lake Street, well, if you could find a spot on Lake Street, tell me, because I have never found a spot on Lake Street.
We, we really didn't.
Never.
It's based on Lake Street.
So you mentioned Lake Street, that's what we're.
I did, we did it, yep.
Okay, you made a reference, what towns did you reference Bellevue to in similarities?
Uh, we didn't make any references to any other specific towns.
You're big powers.
Well, I know.
We have to get accurate recording here, so please.
So, you really didn't do, you should have done the traffic study when school was coming out.
The study period was conducted based on the demand, the peak demand period for the proposed use, which is offset from when the school would be letting out.
You made a reference about there's so many open parking spaces, but what I'm interested in knowing, at the end of the day, when everybody's home, since you're going to be taking up possibly nine, ten parking spaces, do you really think that neighborhood is going to find that? I mean, if you have one parking spot, everybody, I mean, you're throwing nine cars on the street, that's the problem, I don't think anybody has any objection to development, but it's, the parking is the issue, and it's tight the way it is, I mean, it's crazy, I, as a matter of fact, I was just.
Do you have any questions?
No, no, I just want, I need, you need to know that I was on Franklin Street Saturday, around lunchtime, I had to stop in a store there, I had to park illegally just to run into the store. This is on Saturday, just recently, a couple of days ago.
Right.
No, no.
You know, this fellow, let me say, I can't park this. Parking, I, I listened to what you're saying about the streets, but in reality, since you're not from the area and you never lived in Bellevue, I don't think you really.
Do you have any questions, please?
Do you do it in Bellevue?
I do not.
Then you do not know the traffic problem in that area.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to question? Mr. Sheldon, come on up.
Good evening again, Michael Sheldon, twenty seven, two speakers.
Yes.
Just a little confused about some of the statistical data you gave out, the reference to the census, at one point you were saying one point eight cars per unit, another instance one point seven, just totally quick calculation, twenty-five units, one point eight cars per unit generates forty-five cars, going to the lower number, one point seven, it still generates forty-two point five, forty-two. Going to the lower number, one point seven, it still generates forty-two point five, forty-three cars. So you're, at either number, either rate, you're lower than forty-four cars, you're only providing twenty-seven.
Eighteen are provided, twenty-seven.
Eighteen spots, so you're, the division at least nine, but realistically, it seems that you're, you're division upwards of twenty parking spots. So I'm having difficulty, you know, looking at the reality, you know, for the situation, getting into playing games with these numbers, but it looks like you're going to, this project, including its current format, is going to be woefully short of the necessary parking.
So do you have any, clarify a little bit?
Short, what do you, do you moderate on those numbers?
Yeah, so the one point eight, that's in reference to the residential site improvement standards. It's a statewide standard for New Jersey, so it's.
If you don't mind me interjecting, it's for garden apartments.
Uh, yes.
Garden apartment, not, not, not bigger buildings. Bigger buildings is actually.
Point, point eight.
Point eight would be for bigger buildings.
Point eight for one bedroom?
For one bedroom. And there's actually a recent study out there in September of twenty twenty-three that says they need even less than that. Those are studies on actual existing buildings and what's happening within them. That was a study done by Rutgers. So it's even lower than that, if you want to talk about it. So those garden apartments need less than one unit, nine point eight, so it's one unit. All right, so the high rises, or whatever you want to call them, mixed-use buildings, they need point five six.
Right.
So this building is parked higher than that.
Yes, absolutely. And that's kind of what I'm alluding to with some of these numbers. The census data that I'm alluding to, that one point seven, is based on owner occupied units, whereas these are going to be rental, rental units. So the rental rate for the census was, let me just check, about one point three per unit. But as mentioned, and as evidenced by some of the actual data that's out there, we anticipate with the different factors in play, that it will be less than that.
Mr. Bandage, just for my application, you said the Rutgers study, what particular study is this? Because I'm familiar with the two thousand nineteen study that they, they checked, did they produce?
They produced no one, I'll give it to current seventy. Current live in the morning?
Yeah.
Can I suggest that you maybe publish it on the planning board webpage?
I'd love to, along with a lot of other things.
You've got a website company in the background who supposedly does these sorts of things, so maybe you can ask him to, to help you out. I, I have in front of me the page forty-five of the zoning chapter, section C, which describes this buyout. And if I can, I'd just like to read this into the records, since it was already mentioned, the fifteen thousand dollars.
Well, I think you can do that through something.
Well, there's a question that I, I want to ask regarding the sentence that follows in this, in this section after it lists that there's a buyout of fifteen thousand dollars. You're just, such a payment in lieu of construction, maybe linked to the township's dedicated parking fund, the payment in lieu of parking shall be fifteen thousand dollars per space. Now, what comes next, it has me a bit confused. It says all parking associated with units that are deemed affordable per HUD for Essex County income standards for a minimum of ten years shall pay fifty percent, seven thousand five hundred dollars of the fee per space. Does, does that have any impact on this project? I, I'm not really sure what, what they're saying there about the low-income housing and how people are in HUD and they're using the parking. Does that mean that they have the applicant?
That's right. Seventy-five hundred dollars.
I will say that I'm not particularly sure of that section, but we have no affordable units proposed, so we're not the applicant.
And there's no affordable units, right. Well, that, please, secondly, answers that question.
And there, there's, there's a reason for that. It costs a lot of money to develop a unit, to develop parking spaces. So if you want to build an affordable unit, the idea would be to keep that cost down, to help make it affordable. That's why they put that law in there. The other piece of that is that it has to be to a dedicated fund for parking. That was another piece of that whole ordinance, I don't know if you read that or not. So the thing that I would follow is that we do have plans to build other parking lots in that neighborhood. We talked about the Palizzi lot a bunch of times. It's right on the rail tracks, it's about a five-minute walk from your site. The church lot, which kind of upset at the church at this point.
Archdiocese.
The archdiocese, whatever it might be, you know, they'd be a better player in the community. Doesn't seem like they want to be. But the, the private owner at the Palizzi lot seems to be acting as a much better member. They're actually willing to lease that lot to us. We got a quote from our, our engineer. It's going to cost us about a hundred, one thousand, a hundred and ten thousand dollars, I think, to build out that lot once they lease it to us. And that will provide about forty-five parking spaces, and it'll also provide us with a police substation. So the fact that, I'm reading here, a hundred and thirty-five is what you guys will have to pay to get out of it, it would actually finance the entire cost of us to provide that parking. That's great. I think that that's a wonderful thing.
Forty-five spaces.
And it's meterable.
And it's meterable. And at night, we can lease it to, by lease terms, right, for open parking. So I think that's, I, that's a massive win by itself for the community. It's not coming out of taxpayer dollars to build that out.
I agree with you, Peter, that the payout for the nine spots is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And that's a one-off. They, they pay that upfront and there, they have no more obligations. It's not that they have to pay that annually for every ten years, it's one, one time only.
That's to build out costs as a one-time cost, and then we collect revenue there and pay the annual costs.
So with that said, just hypothetically, suppose someone wanted to build a hundred-unit building in Silver Lake and had no parking, could they just give, write a check for one point five million dollars and say we?
Well, that's a hypothetical, and we already approved, this board already approved that we were not going to go to extremes, and we made them shorten the building. So hypothetically of a hundred units more, I don't know where they would put it, but it, we, this board wouldn't take any kind of consideration.
I will say, Mr. Sheldon, in defense, I think maybe we could put a cap on, a physical, a literal cap in the ordinance.
Well, that's what I was leading up to. I think to cover the town's interest, you should point a restriction on the total number of parking spaces that can be brought out, because otherwise, the sky's the limit.
I, I gotta say, I appreciate it.
All right. Your articles do not contribute.
Word of the transfer.
Are there any other comments?
Sean Boghian, sixty-one, avenue, five. My question to you is about open parking, where are they going to park if there's no spots there?
There would be available spaces on the street if it comes to fruition that the adjacent lot is bought out with the township developing to public parking, maybe that could be a future option. But there's, as of right now, it would just be street spaces.
Because as I already said before, there's basically no parking on the side streets whatsoever. And the time, I mean, like a lot of these people in this area, the honest question, I mean, it's been doing this for years. And the question, where are we going to park if people come in? You know what I'm saying?
Sure.
So it's hard because now, the question is, you're not supplying enough spots for this complex that you're going to build. So what do they, what do they park the situation?
Right.
And they do not park enough available spots next to the church or the church lot.
Right, no, they weren't parking in the church lot, right now, right now, we're not parking that adjacent lot on the north side of Franklin. But the main area that we found available spaces during that nighttime period was along, along school, along North Seventh Street. It was wide open. This was closed, the business is closed, that's where the majority was found. On Lake, Lake Street, Gene Place, we really, quite honestly, didn't really find any parking, as, as much as a lot of residents. Franklin Street, handful of, but the mid, the majority was along that section of North Second.
All right, so I just wanted to make that clear, though, because unfortunately, you know, if it's parking in this area, and as some of the council members know, they don't know, some of the do, is parking situation. And if this is not going to be, again, I don't want to address it as a comment, but it's.
A comment will come after, to do a summary.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? All right, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Now, as to adding parking spaces to this area and whether this building will add it, so I'd like to call up actually the owner of the property, Mr. Ponse, to describe how the current situation of the property and how his tenants are parked.
Okay.
You swear to tell the truth, I hope you say the whole truth, and I'll be done. Your name, please?
Len Ponse.
First name?
Len, L E N I N.
And spelling lesson?
Ponse, P O N C E.
L E N I N. P O N C E. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Ponse, are you the owner of the property of this application?
That's right, yes.
And what is the current existing rental situation for the building that exists on the property?
Yeah, currently, there are six tenants there, and they have eight cars that are parking, that are in the part on the street. And there is no off-street parking on the building. So basically, what we are adding is we do the numbers, okay? We're only requesting one more parking, okay, on the street from what we currently have.
That's the only thing I want, very much.
Let me just make sure I have that right.
There's currently no parking on the site?
No.
And there's eight cars that your six tenants have?
Correct.
That are all parking on?
On the street.
Of course, the store.
No, that includes the store.
That includes the store, yes.
Well, what did you include traffic, this one, what did you include in your report? Right, okay.
Thank you.
All right, yes, if you have any questions?
Excuse me, sir.
Mr. Ponse.
Yes, sir. Since you're here, the residential that's already currently there in El Shop, are they anticipating going back into the new building?
No, no, that I know of.
That's it, no. And your residents that you already have in your building currently, are you going to be offering spots inside the new building?
No, they're not.
And that would be walk-on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They want it to rent it.
Oh, yeah, they want it to rent it, yeah.
Of course, okay. Just wondering, wondering.
All right, next witness.
I'd like to call Mr. Sean Moronski, our professional planner.
Evening.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and I'll be done?
I do.
Tell your first and last names.
Sean, S E A N, Moronski, M O R O N, S K I.
Thank you.
And could you please give the board a representative professional status?
Uh, yes, with Langen Engineering and Environmental Services, New Jersey licensed professional planner since the year two thousand, member of the American Institute Certified Planner since nineteen ninety-nine. It's been a while, but I have been before both boards in this town a few years back.
Oh, except your credentials.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Moronski, could you please describe the scope of your involvement in this project?
Um, yes, engaged to provide a planning testimony, review the application, the site, the application plans, the correspondence from your professionals, visited the site and the surrounding area, reviewed the relevant sections of your zoning ordinance and your master plan documents.
Could you first please describe the conditional use, where you're seeking, and whether you're applying to the new conditions?
Yes, and I'm going to refer to chapter twenty-three dash seven point eight, eight sixteen, which is in the BG zone list of permitted uses. It talks about mixed-use residential and commercial buildings, which are permitted if the following standards are met. One talks about must contain ground floor retail, sales and service uses, and/or restaurant uses, and/or all other uses listed as permitted. As previously testified to, we're proposing a one thousand one hundred and fifty square feet ground floor commercial space, so we meet that standard. The mixed-use building shall have its permitted ground floor uses along its entire Franklin Street length with only interruption for its lobby area or residential access. That is the case, as Mr. Ryback mentioned in his testimony in terms of the layout of the building. It says that residential and/or office uses shall be permitted and encouraged above the ground floor. We have residential space only that is proposed above the ground floor, so we meet that requirement. And then finally, it states, the ordinance states that mixed-use buildings that do not contain required permitted uses shall not be permitted as a permitted use in this district. And that wrapping it up, that what is being proposed, the residential uses above the ground floor retail, that do believe that, based on reading the ordinance, that we are a permitted use, as is outlined in the ordinance.
Thank you. And could you briefly describe the variance we're looking at just to take?
Yes, and I do believe that both variances can be granted under the C two criteria, meaning that the benefits of the overall project outweigh any perceived potential detriment which may come from the granting of the variance. And based on the testimony that's been noted, I don't believe there is any substantial detriment. With regards to the number of parking spaces, we're proposing eighteen spaces. And I'm just referring to the plan, just to give a general sense of the eighteen spaces, which has been noted. Access is secured to them. Previous testimony talked about that in addition to the spaces that are in the garage, that spaces in the surrounding area may be available. Also, given that these are one-bedroom units, we are not talking about necessarily that most people will have multiple cars that they would be accessing. It's also worth noting that New Jersey Transit, it's part of this Transit Village program, has transit-friendly land use recommendations and guidelines for communities such as Belleville, which have transit-oriented development near light rail stations, train stations. And it states within one-quarter mile of a transit station, that it do recommend that residential uses could have a reduction in their parking requirements twenty-five to thirty percent. The idea being that by building near these transit stations, that you are encouraging greater use and access to these train stations. This site is a tenth of a mile from the Silver Lake Station, so it certainly fits within that one-quarter mile area. So in terms of the previous testimony, which talked about the parking that's on-site, the availability of parking in the surrounding area, and also, and I'll note this when we talk about your master plan, that sites such as this, given their location near mass transit, are encouraged to have lesser parking standards than, say, for example, what was referenced in RSIS, which are more suburban residential highway-oriented standards, which this clearly is, is not. With regards to the other variants, with regards to the parking setback, five feet is the minimum. We're proposing one foot. And Ms. Ostercorn talked about the layout of the lot. We have a twenty-four-foot-wide drive aisle that provides for efficient circulation in and out of the space. The parking space is at nine by nineteen. And so this lot, which doesn't have cut-through traffic all the time, it's, it's limited in terms of its access, and that, it's balancing act. But if we attempted to provide more of this five-foot area, we would have to alter the parking spaces or potentially lose them, or potentially alter this drive aisle. So the balance is struck by maximizing the number of parking spaces on the lot and having a fence, fencing in order to provide a screen for the site, which I believe for this type of site is, is a better zoning alternative than to have the five-foot, to have the five-foot setback. We, we promote several purposes of zoning. Purpose A, promoting the health, safety, and general welfare. Purpose G, providing sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. The variance relief that we're requesting allows for the productive reuse of this site into a mixed-use, commercial on the ground floor, residential above, near transit, at appropriate scale for the, for the surrounding area. We have to address the negative criteria, that there's no substantial detriment to the public good. And as was talked about at the beginning of the meeting, the initial application was brought down significantly in terms of intensity. The idea being that, that it would be more in keeping with the surrounding area, that the, the parking that's being provided takes into account what may be available in the surrounding area. As Mr. Hughes talked about, also in this surrounding area, the, the number, the average use of mass transit in, in the area, the percentage, the number of cars per unit according to the census. All these things were taken into account in considering, in considering this design, and that this project would be in scale with the surrounding area. There's no substantial detriment to the, to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. This is a permitted use in the BG, commercial residential mixed-use area. And in your, in your most recent master plan update, there were several goals that talked about transit-oriented development in the Silver Lake area, and I'll just go through them briefly. Goal number one, which talks about a variety of housing types. You mentioned that the township continues to encourage higher density development as part of the mixed uses, not only along Washington Avenue, but in the Silver Lake District, within walking distance of the Silver Lake Light Rail Station. The idea is to capitalize on the public transit. The idea is to capitalize on the public transit within the area. And as I noted, we're one-tenth of a mile from the station, it's a short walk. Another goal talks about that the residential zoning should be reevaluated to consider that the fault standards, the use standards are consistent with the historic pattern of development. The idea that the township should consider infill of areas of this type, and that's what is being proposed here. And finally, one of the goals in the master plan talked about the township working with county and state agency to encourage public transit use for the community. It talked about special consideration, the establishment of a transit-oriented development zone for this area. While this is not part of a specific zone, it's this type of use that I believe is what the planning board had in mind when you look at the goals as they were written. The idea that you would have mixed use near transit, not just this light rail station, but also, Mr. Hughes noted, the bus lines as well. So for the reasons that I've outlined, I do believe that we have balanced the positive and negative criteria, that you could grant the requested variances under the C-two criteria. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for this? Close this portion, does the public have any questions for this? Okay, remember, just his testimony.
Yeah, just want to ask one question, that's all.
Come on.
You made reference to the master plan.
Wait, 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 Mario.
You made reference to the rest, master plan. What year are you talking about? The revision, what you cited about the.
Twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one that was updated.
Okay, it was in twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah.
So that's, it wasn't changed any time after that?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, the only reason I bring that up, because just wanted to mention this, because in twenty-twenty-one, there was a planning board appointed by the governing body.
All right, Mario, we're going to finalize.
No, no, just wanted to know that it can be a problem in the future. No, no, it can't be a problem. The planning board appointments were illegally appointed, that made the recommendation. Just wanted to let you know.
All right, is there any other questions? I'm going to close that public portion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
We can let the public go, and then I'll make a presentation, or you want to make a summation first?
You'll have to make a summation.
We should, we should.
I did, yes.
You asked for questions, but.
Public can give their opinion. Yeah, no, we should let the public speak.
We did.
No, they didn't give their opinion, they only asked questions. No, they, he's got to have an opportunity to respond to what they're saying, so he's asking them to.
All right, does anybody want to have a summary of their thoughts on this project? In the public? Seeing none, oh, Mr. Franch Antoni. Please be sworn in.
Do you swear to tell the truth and hold true to the law and the truth and help you out?
I do. I'm going to testify, one twenty-nine, not prostrate, didn't, no. Okay, probably futile, but based on the marriage require, I suggest you deny this application. Let him provide the proper park, reduce the number of units, so he can provide the required parking spaces that are required there. We keep building these human cages all over, taking up every square inch of Belleville. That sign's going to be changed. No longer Cherry Blossom Capital America, it's going to be the Human Cages Capital of America. It's detrimental, again, like with the traffic engineer. I go there every Monday. We go to Aldis, and that's where we go over Belleville Avenue, Belmont Avenue, and there's always backlog. We tried going up Montgomery Street and cutting over, there's traffic all over the place. I believe one of you board members lost the last election because people were aggravated with overdevelopment. So I hope you think, I mean, this is ridiculous. I mean, you get up here, that, oh, it's a great unit. Well, sure, only nine parking spaces, but it's really great, you know. And the other thing, regards to the last gentleman, I don't want to be still here, thank you. We hear every word you've said, you spoke loud and clear, I appreciate that. I wouldn't put too much trust in New Jersey Transit, whatever they suggest. In nineteen ninety-five, New Jersey Transit held a public hearing on the future of the light rail. It was advertised for the eight-and-a-half million people in New Jersey. I was the only one that showed up in there. And they were going to have the Transit Twenty-Twenty Program. By the year twenty-twenty, twenty-five years, they were going to have about forty-eight, I believe, light rail systems all over New Jersey that you wouldn't need your cars, you can travel anywhere in New Jersey, the light rail. That didn't happen. And again, I don't know if you people look at the news or read the newspapers. Would that have you put trust in New Jersey Transit? You know, so all these folks, that New Jersey Transit's a gus, it's New Jersey Transit, it's the work of the country. So don't go by what New Jersey Transit recommends, they are an absolute failure. Not all in my opinion, happens to be the guy who's the governor of New Jersey, just said it last week in the newspapers. So please, you stopped him at one point, you had him reduce the number of units, have him reduce it again so that he doesn't need any variances. We are destroying this once suburban town. And again, when I ran for office, it was maintain our suburban character. But unlike most officials, I produced on that. Right after I got in office, we reduced the density from twenty-five units per acre to sixteen, right? So, and then we get this new administration with a hundred, two hundred, whatever you want. Don't worry about it, whatever you want. You got a good campaign contribution, we'll give you whatever you want. Please, wake up and stop destroying Belleville. You have an opportunity, because these two variances can allow you to reject this application. Please do so.
Is there anyone else that would like to say something? I'm going to close this portion. Your summary, sir?
I'll make it very brief. We were here last month, big project, we brought it down. We met the other things that you're asking for. We give some green space, we're willing to work with your engineer on the curbing issue. We're making a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar contribution, which, from what we've heard tonight, should be enough to cover an entire new forty-five-unit parking structure in the borough. We're compliant with your density ordinance, we're compliant with your height requirements. The only variances we seek are for the placement of the setback of the parking, which our engineer described allows us to get more parking, which I think everyone would agree is a good thing. And if you want to call it a variance, the parking variance, but we're buying out of the variance as your ordinance allows. So I respectfully request that the board grant this application as presented.
All right. I'd like to get a motion.
I want, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I would like wording, if this is approved, wording to say that the leases have to contain wording that there was no parking provided for the units that I'm not going to have.
Can we do that? If it's a condition.
I mean, you could put it in there, I'm not, to be completely fair, I'm not sure whether or not that's a enforceable thing from the board, but I think.
I'd like to have it.
You'd like to, you'd feel more comfortable with that in there.
Yes, I would.
And he's already agreed that he was, the units that don't have parking will say they don't have parking, so that they know they're not going in.
Yes. Just real briefly, I mean, this is my neighborhood, I've lived there my whole life. When I first heard the application, I was against it. Not enough parking to me is never a good thing. But after their explanation that money, the fee paid is going to provide forty-five parking spots. So we're going to be short nine, but we're gaining forty-five. My whole life, visiting the businesses in Silver Lake, I always walked, because there was no parking. And by providing parking, I think this would greatly enhance the businesses in Silver Lake, and maybe we could even get some better businesses, even have a place to park.
Yes, agreed.
Agreed.
I think that's one of the reasons some of the businesses have such a. I'm sorry. So some of these businesses don't last in Silver Lake, and that's probably one of the reasons. So I think in addition to forty-five parking spaces, that will help the residents and the business owners, and also consumers too, who will step in a plus, so I'm good for this.
Any other? Sorry, I.
I mean, just add that there was, we talked at the break, Mr. Gilson and I, about the issue of the sidewalk. And so my suggestion was that we would put in the resolution that they would comply with providing the new sidewalk in front of their property on both streets, but that they would work with the township engineer so that if the town is doing sidewalk along the front on Franklin, as provided in the plan that the town already has, that they would work with the town engineer to contribute to the sidewalk being redone for the same length and cost in some other section of the town. But of course, with Mr. Harretts not here, I'll have to work with the wording with him to make sure that that works. But I think it fits what you were looking for out of that issue, which is they're still providing their fair share of the sidewalk cost for rebuild, and it may allow you to use your money a little differently.
Which is definitely a issue.
Have you really talked about the conditions?
Yes.
Was that there or?
That, I have that, and I have the one proposed by Mr. Venira, that the leases would have a notice in them on the units that do not have parking. That will say that in the lease clearly, so that those individuals know that they've got to find parking someplace else.
And I'm sorry, I saw it should have came up before, but the fence, was that?
Yes, it's going to be a composite.
Composite fence, it's not going to be chain-like.
Right.
So, okay.
That was also agreed to by the Apple.
And the one other thing we agreed to, for purposes, please, is the six-month look back.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I need a motion with these conditions?
I motion with the conditions.
Can I get a second? A second. Well, whoa, please.
Chairman Alvarado.
Yes.
Mr. Venira.
Yes.
Mr. Vanda.
Yes.
Mr. Brazian.
Yes.
Ms. Wommen.
Yes.
Mr. Guine.
Yes.
Mr. Van Yari.
Yes.
Mr. Land.
Yes.
All right, that concludes our agenda, and I get a motion for our Jeremy?
Motion.
All in. I'll see everybody September twelfth, six-thirty.